I have Warren Pierce, Jeffrey Griffin, myself, Dave Riddell here. Um, why don't we?
This meeting is being recorded.
Being, yeah, it just, yeah, this meeting is being recorded. Um, why don't we go over the meeting minutes first? Just to close out. Um, you had a chance to review this?
Oh, yeah.
Do you, okay?
You're good?
Yeah, so do you want to do the motions?
Sure, I move that the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated August twentieth, twenty twenty four as written.
Second.
Second, motion second, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Next one.
I move the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated September seventeen, twenty twenty four as written.
Second.
Motion second, thank you Warren, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one.
I move the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated October first, twenty twenty four as written.
Second.
Got motion, I got second, discussion, none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do you want to do the, there's the giant meeting minutes too? I guess I, I don't know, might not have been motion for them, but they were minutes that were taken from.
Yeah, um. I think, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're actually, you know, they're outside, but if you haven't had a chance to look at them.
I would have had a chance, but, um, yeah, we'll do that next time. Yeah, so let's just do, what, and what, what was the date of that?
Uh, no, uh, September ninth.
Okay, so nine, nine. All right, so.
I got the, I got the motions in, in my, uh, system three times, did you put them in there three times?
I think it was.
I had to make corrections, so I deleted, took out, deleted, took out.
Okay, I was just wondering why it was in there three times, like once is enough.
Wait a minute, didn't, they didn't get deleted?
No, there was three in there, they all look the same though.
I looked one.
Do they have a slight typo or? They all look pretty good.
Yeah, they had, yeah.
Yeah, you can tell. All right, so do you want to go through the kit, will do the continuation?
No, well, are they coming?
No.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So we have a motion for that.
Preparing for a seat there?
Yeah, and again, any discussion on that, I don't have any problem doing an extension. Is, for them. Yeah.
The share file, it's just, if you've got it Warren, you can read it.
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Mr. Pierce.
I move the community planning vote to grant the requested extension of time to complete the thirty five C D Street definitive subdivision. According to bond utilities and drainage for one year until November twenty first, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, sorry.
Motion second, or motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Extended. Almost a year. Or any year. Good. Now, uh, next up, uh, is Seventeenth Anthony.
Definitely, well, can I?
Yeah.
Well, where are they on that? On, on the C D Street?
Said electrical was the note, yeah. Still waiting on both the wire inspector and then North Reading.
Oh, I read all that, but.
Oh, what the exact, like what the exact issue is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. The red light I know can be slow. But usually, once you get an approval, they'll, they'll come right, they'll tell you where all the everything's supposed to go. So I would assume that the plan we approved has all those, those, uh, utility locations on it.
It does, except that the electrical is usually up to our money to, um, for, for, you know.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Yeah.
Metering, transformers, all that fun stuff. Could be some requirements with the pad that's not right, I don't know. Things like that.
Do you have, know what, what, when we approved that, when we?
Originally?
Yeah.
Um, I, um. It should dash, just a third or four, I want to say it was twenty nineteen, but I can, I can check.
It just occurs to me that it's been a long time.
It's not.
Because I remember that it's a long time ago that we approved that, so. Um, this must not be the first extension.
No, it's gonna be the third or the fourth, um, let me see.
Yeah, keep track of that. And it's not a question about what, what they're doing, not doing, it's a question of when you're in the neighborhood and you take too long to do something, the whole neighborhood kind of.
Suffers, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there.
Sometimes you want to stay with, you know, we give this extension, but we'll leave it all on here. Just a thought.
Yeah. All right, Seventeenth Anthony Road. You may just speak of, like your name. How many of them, all in one?
Um, Bill, all the civil design consultants and also, yes, back again, also with me is Joe Talbot, the African, uh, the audience. So we're here before you for a minor modification to the subdivision plan. Uh, as you might recall, last month we were here seeking a waiver to the roadway width, which was granted with the condition, uh, that we do sprinklers in the dwellings. Since then, we spoke with Deputy Chief Galvin, and he's agreed to allow the twenty-three foot wide roadway as long as we provide, uh, minimum of a twelve foot wide driveway with two foot shoulders on either side of it for a sixteen foot travel width. Uh, and that would remove the sprinkler requirement, and I believe you have correspondence from him indicating that. So that's what we've done, um, to do that, what we've done is just on the plan set, we added a note twenty-three, stating that all driveways should be a minimum twelve foot pave width with two foot compact shoulders on either side for a total travel width of sixteen feet. Um, so that's what we're here for, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Is the, uh, the stone, is the stone, so this just driveways, it's not like, you know, obviously we have granted curb, the twenty-three foot road. So this is the driveways that they're, so that, I just wanted to.
Yeah, so, what are your question?
Will, so will the base bed prep for the twelve foot driveway include for the, also for the additional four feet, or are you just doing a stone?
That's a big good question.
Well.
The other question is, what, what are you going to do with the roundings? The rounding is going to be to the stone or the rounding is going to be to the hot tub?
So we would normally just do them to the hot tub?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, my, well, if I correct you if I'm wrong, but the understanding is that you're making the driveway big enough for an engine to get into the driveway. So, I mean, that, and that's what the trade office, it needs to be big enough for the engine to get in without having a problem driving over something, and that's why you widen it. But if you, you put the roundings into the driveway. They're going to drive over them in order to get in anyway, so.
So we typically do a three foot rounding?
Yeah.
So that would give a foot and a half or a three foot radius on it, so it gives a few feet on either side for the rounding before you have the curb going in there, but we could widen those layers a little bit more to accommodate that.
Yeah, just to, you know, trying to make sense of it all, make a practical view, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, because the three feet is just the starting point, it still ends at twelve, right, you know, so you'd still be pinching the two feet on each side, right? You know what I'm saying, the curve, the curves, the radius, but yeah, it's on the outside, not, nowhere meets the asphalt, like in the, the twelve foot section of the driveway. It's kind of a weird detail, so you'd have to pave the whole apron and then have these kind of like cutouts where you go stone all the way up. Makes for a strange, I mean, be interested to see. Um, how you handle that, so I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, personally, just thinking about, I'm fine with, you know, having a note for that, as long as it's everyone else's, but, um, you know, would like a note on the prep of that too, underneath, you know, what is being prepped underneath that, it should be the same preparation underneath, you know, the subbase. But it is like Warren said, it is a little strange, me too.
Yeah, so our intent would be to have the subbase prep, uh, that's what we intended by saying the total travel width. Um, so that they're able to get through it, just like the driveway, but we can clarify that a little bit.
Just a curious question too, is with, you know, with building code requiring sprinklers, you know, it's ready for reg, regular ones, how do you, how do we, a lot of things you think, so like, we, we had something in here, you know, for more about solid fire department access, triggering a requirement, but how do you now circumvent that in the building code? Is, is it just, you know, in your experience here in North Reading, you know, requiring, because that's kind of outside our area, I'm just curious.
So I can't speak to the building code, but as far as NFPA is concerned, um, we need those requirements without having sprinklers. Um, so that's part of the reason why we had a little hard ground for sprinklers, the other part is Joe mentioned at the last hearing, which is a bad experience with those.
Right.
So, um, I don't believe we would have an issue with the building permit process, but again, that's not something.
So Bill, describe for me then what you meant by NFPA, so what part do you, allows you not to have sprinklers in the buildings and the houses, basically?
So my understanding is you need the sprinklers when you have a driveway that's longer than, I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't have that in this instance, and we also have hydrants along the roadway as well.
Right.
Um. Yeah, exactly, so we need those two requirements and meet NFPA.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's still at odds, and then again, this is not for, I'm just saying, I think, you know, we, all the homes we're building right now in Maine, I'll rebar them, and they got little twenty foot driveways, so it's not, it's, it's in the IRC twenty twenty one. It's been in the code for the last six editions, so it is required, it has nothing to do with the driveway, but if NFPA, as far as it relates to site design, perhaps has that carve out, but I know it's required, but again, that's not our, what we are looking at, I was just curious.
Okay.
How it, it became kind of a planning board thing, and yet it's really almost a building code thing, it's not shared for us, really.
We had it mentioned in the fire department.
That's what I mean, yeah, I mean, they act kind of, if you will, as the marshal, you know, for, you know.
And then, did you, did you have a question, did you do a cross section of that driveway, the driveway change?
It's not, it's only, you just did the road, you know, the main.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cross section, you didn't do driveway, not a typical driveway.
We just have, um, as you said, the road cross section, and then we have like a typical pavement cross section, which would be intended for the driveways, for the aprons.
Just to keep stuff from growing through the stone, staying with that tone.
Yeah, yeah, so like I said, the intent is that we prep it like subbase, so it would be compact.
Multi pack.
A little multi pack. Um, so, win back. Do Jeff, do you have any questions on the driveway one, um, because that's, you know, one of the, the minor mods, but I just had questions if he doesn't on the whole G two review thing. Daniel, but I'm going to wait. I don't want to move on or something.
No, I don't think so, I think I'm okay with that.
Are you, well, are you good?
Yeah.
Um, so Daniel put up the, the G two review, the peer review, that was dated the fourth of September, and they were reviewing plans of yours from July, as I can see, July was in seventeen, yeah, seventeen. Um, and they had a number of things on them, a, a couple of things I noticed. Um, you had the, uh, the long-term O N Ms, you know, the two different versions they wanted, you had those kind of dated almost March. Um, I'm just wondering, Daniel, like what, what does G two have of their newer docs, because they had the docs, the fourth was the letter, and then the sixteenth, all the, the docs were dated, sixteenth as well as the,
Right.
The O N Ms were like March.
Yeah, GM two actually identified a number of things that were already in the original conditional approval, but because they don't see, um, they, the plans aren't, weren't edited for endorsement yet, but weren't done, so they picked them all up again.
Right.
Um, then for this latest iteration, um, they have them, but they have not yet finished their review, so, um, what I was going to suggest is if you were comfortable with the plans and wanted to, um, approve, approve the minor modification subject to final review, um, from the, from GM two, we would put in any additional outstanding items in as conditions of approval, if you'd rather wait until we have that final letter, that's fine, but they were not done with their review.
Okay.
Yeah.
And once, I mean, their last review took about seven weeks, I guess, if you're using July, July there.
I'm hoping it wouldn't take that long.
Yeah.
They honestly, I, I think they, they kind of just fell off the radar, they just didn't, uh, get to it, it's, it's pretty small, um, but we should have it soon.
So Bill, if I can ask you the questions, just listing them off there, because one, you know, to, to Daniel's point, I'm fine if you kind of answer the questions for me, you know, and maybe for the others here, but so the first one was the conduit flow at two feet per second, uh, was a minimum on that, I did see calc's in there that seemed to address that.
Yeah, yes, we had confirmed that and sent the calculations though.
Okay, and then the O N Ms I saw again, um, and then the other one here was the twelve cultech, um, units, and then, and then your hydro calc's had fifteen, I noticed now we've got, you know, what is it, eight, is, is what's in there in each one, or is it?
Yeah, uh.
So explain that all to me, like, you know, how that's changed, like the way that G two is going to be looking at that.
Yeah, so there was a discrepancy in the calculations that they noted, so we just made a consistent growth plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then on the roof drainage overflow, I did notice in your section, you have an overflow kick out on that, so that probably takes care of that for them.
Yeah.
Um, how about with the, um, the auto turn, where you had the V O S forty-five dims, they said, uh, show the dims on the plan? That, did you do that?
So we went with, um, actually with the aerial fire truck.
So it's a different, what's the code for that, for auto turn, right?
Um, I have to get you the exact.
Okay.
On that, but it's a forty-five foot long aerial truck, ladder truck.
So what's the difference between, really with this, like it's a bus forty-five, what's the difference between that vehicle and then the aerial?
So we didn't have the specifications for what the fire department was looking for, so we just ran the bus through there because it's a forty foot long vehicle, it's pretty similar. Um, but once we got those specifications, we changed it to more closely aligned with the fire department's equipment.
Good. So we might, Daniel, we might want to just confirm that, since that was a, a question on, on G two's, in this same with, if you will, which it might be similar to encroachment, but on the, um, on the curb out in Anthony Road and then the cul-de-sac, they said there was encroachment on the, when, when they ran the, the forty-five on that. So that would be one, and again, you know, they're happy, I'm not, so I'm good, I just wanted to bring them up.
Yeah, we did revise the template to make sure that there were no conflicts there.
Okay. The other one was the different colors for the in and out entry movements, that was smaller kind of, you know, type one. Um. Let me see. Yeah, that's all, that's really all I had, and just confirming you have three hydrants, right?
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, um. I'm good on all my stuff, and anything, Warren, on your end, or Jeff?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm curious, the new fire truck a building? How big is it?
That's true, that one point two million dollar one.
It's got to fit in the same.
The one point nine is a ladder truck.
It's going to fit the same building the current trucks in, so it's probably about the same size.
There you go.
Because it might be a wild phone building of one of those.
Um, if we, and I'll just open this up to the public, if anybody wants to speak, um, about project, or is any questions? Anybody online? Daniel?
Um, I don't see any hands up, but if anyone on the Zoom would like to speak, just raise your hand.
It's two. All right. So, um, we, I guess, we have a motion, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
Aye. Go back to that. Long time.
Or do you have a chance?
Oh, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I went back and started looking at all the stuff you were going through.
Yeah, me too.
My holy man.
Yeah, um, okay, uh. I moved as a committee planning commission vote to approve the minor modification to plan entitled Seventeenth Anthony Road and Priest Forty-Six, Breer, Abel Street, parcel two one three dash three oh dash six one, and two one three dash four seven dash twenty-five, no threading mass, oh one eight six four. Plan dated twelve six twenty twenty-two, last revised nine sixteen twenty twenty-four, drawn by Civil Design Consulting, subject to final review and approval by the Towns Consulting Engineer prior to the final plan endorsement.
Motion?
Say it.
Second, in the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries. All in line, so, okay, you all said Phil?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe, too. This is interesting about that, the sprinkler, the sprinkler, we, we have, that's fifteen thousand a house, that's.
We don't really, we don't really, basically, we haven't really required sprinklers, unless, unless we had really long driveways.
Yeah, or I know when you need water, you know, where you don't have hydrant, you know, that's when you would do it.
Oh, yeah, they don't like hydrant within five hundred people.
Or if you're, you know, really, you have a well or something.
Subdivision is absolutely no reason not to have a hydrant.
You know, I wish we could convince Portland, otherwise, trust me, you know, where it costs ninety dollars right now.
No one else needs sprinklers, when you have fireworks, it's probably won't, it'll be a house.
Yeah.
Baby, that's more lawn sprinklers, or roof sprinklers.
A roof sprinkler.
There you go, the San Diego winds in California, need a roof sprinkler for there, this is, it just starts raining.
God damn fireworks, guys.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
ADUs?
Oh, where are we? Do we, so we're talking ADUs, um, also on the C P C clerk, so that's just to, um, replace Ryan, who is the clerk, right?
If you want to, if you want to wait till we have the four members, or if you want to wait till someone new is appointed, it's up to you, it's on each end.
So the clerk is with Ryan, the clerk basically handles the reading of the motions and help me, Daniel.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, right, so. It's, it's, we already have a vice chair and a chair, so if you want, we, we could, but we could wait for Max to.
You or nobody.
Yeah, exactly.
You're allowed to share it.
All in favor, step forward, we're all like, we're winning, you're just left there.
Yeah, that'd be me.
Yeah.
You're already doing it, so.
Pretty much.
All right, I'm there, whatever.
So do we have to vote on it, or?
To nominate.
We can, we can not change it anytime.
I nominate Jeff Griffin.
No, you know, I actually, Jeff.
Okay, okay, I second that.
Okay.
Do we have to vote, I mean, we do?
We do.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You can vote, yes, aye.
Aye.
It's not like you have.
Vote is here enough, I know.
Too bad. You're in anyways.
All right, you are now officially, oh, how excited.
Yeah, ah.
But, but it can be changed, you know, would you change it?
There's starting to see commercials from you.
I write notes and I do all that.
Start seeing commercials from you, you might have lost money. I'm the treasurer. Oh, the clerk, I should say. All right. Let's see, ADUs.
I have no new information on ADUs, I also don't have any information on whether there may be a special town meeting being planned, I have heard it's been talked about, but I don't know, I mean, it's not there, want to talk about it, but I have nothing to.
Well, if, 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 if we can, I loved to get together with Jerry.
Yeah, I talked to Jerry that night, just asking him if we can set up something for you.
Just, just to pick some stuff around.
He's got a lot of good ideas and, um. But, yeah, but I, I did, I did, you know, put together some notes and, um, and just, these are just more kind of heads up, um, things on it that I think is just important. But I think what we have to do is, you know, determine, and, you know, working with Mike, um, the T A, like, we, we have to probably have something put together, so we need to proceed putting together bylaw, whether or not to do it.
I think, I, my suggestion is, unless you're in the real, be hurried, just wait a little bit. Um, I've already, I talked to a couple of people in different towns that I know, and they're supposedly going to give me copies of AD bylaws that they already, they have.
Yeah.
That passed muster.
Yeah.
And it's not like having something, you know, works, and then you build on it and cut from it.
Well, the only problem though, is from the ones I've read, whether it's Reading or in, in other towns, and I have a few copies myself, is.
Reading is an old one.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, they're, they're, they were very kind of counter to forty, forty A, you know, three, section three, you know, kind of a lot of interior and dial the house and all that, all the things that you're really not really able to do. Um, so I think that a newer ADU bylaw would be a little, yeah, a little lighter.
Yeah.
But I do think it has, it has some themes that like, just, it's just for, for us to be thinking about. Two is, I'm just going to let the notes are, again, what's key to on, on, on forty, and, and I think there's only one thing that got, um, changed on, so, I mean, or impacted, so forty A three, now section three, is what then later the M E T A, you know, three A, generally don't want to, but still going back to the space, it says, um, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the interior area of a single family residential building, so that one statement, um, and a lot of this is all about agriculture, farming, too, that's the whole purpose of really forty, uh, forty three, but, um, they do throw that in there, and that's important, but one thing is interesting is so, and Daniel, you can maybe help me here on definitions, but is, is an ADU necessarily a single family, you know, residential building, and that's the whole thing, like, of, you know, but not that I want to get into the business of regulating what's inside an ADU, but I'm just saying, it's a key question, I think.
Yeah, so this, they, they wrote the statute so that these were only, uh, to be added to single family houses, nothing else, I mean, you can have a bylaw that puts it somewhere else, but this isn't that.
Yeah.
This is.
It's still an accessory.
That one, single family house.
So then, I have a question, so then if someone has like a two family, eaten two family, and they want to add an ADU, but this does not apply to them?
This does not apply.
Yeah, it's only single family, right, is where they have by right. Um, so that's, that's one, and then the however there, which is just a paragraph that says, however, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk, the height of the structures, and determining the yard sizes, the lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, which is down, not maybe so, you know, parking is the only one that kind of is counter to forty A three, uh, section three, and building coverage requirements, all of those except the parking one are the other ones that I think, you know, give a framework for what we can, you know, can do and what still seem to apply, they, they are in, if you go to the, the, um, the Forbals Homes Act information page, they'll, they almost just have this verbatim from forty A, except the parking's not in it, so uh, there's other things that we can't do too, but go ahead, Jeff.
So, so I'm kind of curious, so like, I know that when we, um, work with newer developments and, you know, they have the engineers and they draw up all this water runoff, and they're talking about the fifty year stone, the twenty year stone, and we get into all that stuff. How is this stuff going to affect, you know, if someone doesn't detach? Whatever the script footage is, like you said, a driveway could be, you know, fourteen feet by, you know, sixty, I mean, how is this all, is any of that going to impact?
Um, so the structure bylaw gets triggered by an acre of disturbance for more, so unless it's, if it's an acre of disturbance, absolutely, they have to do all that, but if it's under, which is by most single family houses, don't meet that threshold, so no, we would not expect most of them, because you.
Okay, so they, that, okay, so then all that's kind of talking, okay.
It just doesn't trigger it.
I'm just curious, and, and do we know that if the new, um, the new floodplain has been released?
Not yet.
Okay, do, do we know when it's coming?
We expect it, um, we expect to get a letter notifying us of it, uh, January or February, but we're not sure yet, December, January, or February, I believe.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just curious if that's going to even.
It could.
For some, some people, because I mean, we have, everything we have is in the swamp somewhere, so it may. It may, okay, I'm just curious.
The, uh, the other ones in there are separate entrance, outsider shared hallway to meet ADRIS code, um. We, um, you can restrict a short term rental, we already know we can't restrict ownership, that part. Um, so question on that, do we already have anything in a bylaw right now for short term rentals?
No, but we should do that in conjunction with, with this, doesn't have to be in the same bylaw, but Jerry and I have been talking about it.
Absolutely, hundred percent agree on that one, so that one is, so that one is the bylaw, Jeff, for, um, short term rentals.
So, like, does this, um, does an Airbnb get tossed in, that's?
Yeah, that's short term rental.
So that all, okay.
But you prohibit short term rentals.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I think especially since, you know, if there was the owner requirement, I feel actually okay with, like, short term, I mean, it's not like people come to North Reading for short term rental, but it's geared in urban areas, that's where they, they're really prevalent, but, um, but since there's no ownership now, it's like, I, I think you have to have some restrictions on the rental of it, so that, you know, at least it's a one.
What's missing, what's missing in it though, when I read you the book, I think what's missing is enforcement.
That's a shit, Warren, you just put the words, how do we know?
Yeah, I know.
How do you know?
Okay, but so in the past, when we've talked about this, there's been all kinds of things, like, like, um, when we do the census, if there's a line in the census, is any of this rent, rented out, is it rented out to an owner? If there's a line in the census, is any of this rent rented out, is it rented out to a normal, you can ask those questions. And the reason that I thought it was important to put some of that in is not so much to try to keep track of the people, but in order to provide the fire department with information. So if they know there's more than one family in that house, so then, hey, your mom and dad, the kids out, well, there's an ADU there, and there's another. Person with a kid in there, but they don't know that because they don't know, so we can't. But one of the reasons I wanted some kind of regulation on it, so that we could provide that for the fire department, so when they go to a house, they know. What's the probability of how many people are in there from the census, the only way to keep track.
Yeah, but do, does right now, does the fire department have, tie in the census data when you get a nine-one-one, you know?
Well, in the, in this particular, and, well, right now, is darn few of these ADUs out.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, so you're, you're.
They're operating, they're operating under the assumption that it's a single-family home with a single.
Yeah, but, you still, but just follow the logic, if you're, if you're saying that the purpose it would need to know would be. You know, using the census data allows you to know what's, who's in the primary dwelling right now, as it stands without ADUs in this town. I don't, from what I understand, there's no correlation between what's in the census data and what the fire department pulls up, like, there's no one racing to your. House knowing what your source of data is. Would it be a good idea? Maybe, but that's getting kinda big, brother, but.
That it would be a good idea to keep that to that.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, if we're introducing something for an ADU, it has to kind of be already in place, or something that is done right now, like. But I think what you have is most people nowadays, like, most, and especially moving forward, are not hooking up to the hotline, they're using their phone. So they know where you are, they know who you are.
So the enforcement thing is, is, is a difficult thing, when I talked to Jerry about it way back when we first talked about these, two or three years ago, when we first started talking about it. He's like, the majority, what they wanna do is already allowed by state law, so, you know, basically, not that much I can do. Except encourage them to follow the rules, so.
This is all attached.
So, so they get inspection, so they get, so that they, so that any, you know, electrical work or anything that's done, it's been inspected and, and, uh. You know, it's not gonna have a problem as a result of that.
So I have a silly question. And this might really be silly.
No silly questions.
No, so, the, the problem is, is that if you have an ADU, like, how do we know how many families or how many persons, or? Like, we don't know, and the fire department isn't, even if the census, they're not, I don't think they're gonna really know. Um, I know, like, when we do safety-related things in our field, we have a placard that we post on the building. Just to give, and it's strictly just for the fire department, it's one of the things we do, that we, you know, maybe that's something that. And, and again, I don't know if it's silly or not, but.
Census is definitely used for things like predicting the number of kids in school and all that stuff, so, well, then this census information is being accumulated somewhere.
Well, I'm just saying, like, an onsite type of, uh, a quick reference. For the, if it's that, if that's a concern, we wanna know how many persons in the building, or how many people are now, you know, in that single-family home. It used to be four, and now it's six, or seven, whatever, like, is there something that we can do with that? I mean, I, I don't know, I.
I mean, I think the fire department, how they do it now, like, how do they track how many people might be living in a home, I don't know what they do.
How do we address that? So if they live in, you know, twelve Green Lane, do they, are they in twelve A Green Lane?
Well, that's another good question, too, Warren, cause now we're adding a, a structure to the property. Like, how?
How do we keep the mail correct?
Well, I cares about the mail, but, but, but.
They do.
No, it's true, like, cause some of these, I'm, I'm assuming they're going to be kinda tucked away and hidden and.
Even if they're on site, inside, is they, is there a separate address for them, I mean?
Like, how does that work? Because if it's a different family.
So you're, you're bringing up good things, but still, let's just keep kind of buliding these stuff, so we're going way down rabbit hole, but like, that's a good one, so like, PO. PO office, let's try to find out how the US Postal Service handles that, just starting at the top. I mean, like, how are they handling that with the existing ones now? I suspect they'll just go to the primary.
Too, you know, if they don't have the good one, I mean. Are using, um, a weather vet station on top of it, at a number.
Warren, when you talk to your, you know, your friends or whatever, in other different cities and towns, I mean, I can reach out to plumbing inspectors that I know. Personally, and building inspectors I know personally, over in Lexington.
Well, there's a couple of towns that are getting ready to bring an ADU, are already to their town meetings, so I wanna see what, what happens, and see if I can get copies of something, so.
Too much meeting to the one in this month, or something, or?
Oh, I don't know, I just forgot what the date of it was, it's just, I think it was, I think they're moving into their, we want their three A, there are a couple of them, but. I also saw approval, one of the towns got an approval for a community grant, to build for their land master plan. And, and then the approval letter in the bottom line, it says, of course, it requires approval. You know, so, oh, I'm like, really? No, yeah, I knew they showed in there someplace, so.
So the, uh, the dimensional law is also another good one, because again, right now, the, um, the requirements on. On, just to call it an express, and accessory structure are only ten feet to all lot lines, except the front, the front's twenty feet, so. To me, you know, just me personally, that's, that's not acceptable.
Well, we can change, we can.
Right, so I think, yeah, and I have, you know, I have, just for a brief here, the, this is for all the different residential ones. All, you know, call it the floor, I guess, right, that would apply to the rest of the, uh, well, I don't know, what's RA, technically?
We have a residence E, that's on the zone that has, uh, the reins in it, the, the planning and development.
Okay, cause the, yeah, there's the, the, the BUD, and then there's, and then it says any other permitted use, but.
There's only one, and it has beauty in it.
Okay, so it's plan unit or any other lot, cause once it's hundred acres on the plan unit development, you know, it says forty thousand square feet as far as the minimum block. Um, anyways, this is on the dimensional table, so.
Yeah, but you wouldn't wanna have a house that's set, um, forty feet back from the street, and then put an ADU out in front of it.
Well, yeah, I know, that's, so I think it just has, in my opinion, I, nothing special, it just should match whatever the zone is, so if it's, again. If it's a forty thousand square foot block requirement, which is RA and RR, that has a forty-foot front. It has a twenty-five side and a fifty rear, if it goes to the smaller lot, like a twenty thousand RV.
Yep.
It's twenty-five front, twenty side, twenty-four rear, to me, those are all like, really reasonable things. You still have the coverage, you know, max, the coverage on, say, a forty thousand is eight thousand square feet, max coverage, so. You'd have to have a pretty big house with nine hundred square foot, and you'd have to have a seven, you'd have to have an eight hundred square foot house, so that'd be. No one's gonna get hit these maxes, so with an ADU of nine hundred square feet.
I think you can use all those setbacks in our ADU bylaw without, without penalty.
No, yeah, it says right there in forty-eight, you can do it, and then what I would do, though, is definitely, I'd look at the height. Um, right now, the max is thirty-five feet for the main dwelling, I don't think we should be anywhere near that, you know, personally. I think, right now, an accessory structure is twenty feet, I say it should be maybe twenty-five feet. If it's subordinate, or it's, it's supposed to be, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be like, you know, reading as two big houses on a lot. Should be an accessory structure to me, to me, in having a max, especially if it only can be nine hundred square feet, it doesn't need to be thirty-five feet high. If you want help with a narrow building. What?
If it's a detached building.
Yeah, I'm talking about detached, of course, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's the main dwelling, and you have, you have.
Thirty-five foot over in twenty feet over here, you want it to be.
Well, uh, you know, again, I think it's still.
I mean, do you want that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be subordinate, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be overtaking, because what can happen, Warren, is if you have an older house or whatever. If you leave them both thirty-five, the old, the old house might only be twenty-eight feet, you know, so the next one, you can, a builder come and make it, but that, the ADU thirty-five feet or something. I think it needs, that's one area that I would just fear from the main house one, because it isn't.
Yes, so you're saying not to exceed the main house.
Yeah, so it would be maximum, so maximum, right, is thirty-five, pretty much on, pretty much on every house, you know, it is on every house. Um, and I, you know, again, I'm just one person, but I think that I wanna know the public's input and all that, but the, the thirty-five seems very high for me. For a nine hundred square foot accessory structure.
That doesn't make sense.
It's too, it's too high, I mean, you, you really have to see, you just drive through those neighborhoods, they're, you know, they're maybe twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet. You know, it's not, you know, no, that's, and that's a house with a nice big cable and everything, it's, it's not, it's not, um. You know, thirty-five's a lot, and so I think, but, but, so we just move on here, I think the dimensional table that we have can easily be used. It'd be helpful when we change the zoning, it's just gonna be added in here as a note or whatever, so it'll be easy to follow for everybody. Um, that's dimensional, what else do we have in here? Obviously Title V, we've already kind of talked about that, you know, so that's not gonna go through class, but it should be a checklist kind of thing, so, right?
Is that something like we could talk to, like, Jerry about, because if someone's gonna do a detached. Nine hundred square foot unit, and they're septic, and Warren, actually, Warren, you.
Basically, well, basically, any type of building from this, this, a pole, it goes through all the departments and town, it gets cycled through all the departments. So we just have to, and, and I, I will say, having done a lot of stuff down here, and gone, gone into the files, many, many of the building files. And finding things where the, somehow, it went through the checklist, but everything, but never got checked.
Dropped off.
Yeah, yeah, or, or got checked off, but never got done, you know, I mean, it's obvious that there was a problem, and, and, yeah, and, and. Addition was done, but I never addressing that problem, but somebody just checked off that box, so. So, uh, just making sure that that's, everything is done appropriately is really, uh.
Yeah, that to me is a straightforward one for board to help, I mean, they're looking at what the current capacity of the existing dwelling is, the primary dwelling, and then. What you're looking to do in your nine hundred square feet, if you're adding in two bathrooms, or two bedrooms, or double bedrooms, but you're adding in two bedrooms.
Or in town, you run into a problem, it was in all this system, and there's no design criteria, and they don't, what, what was it designed for, well, who knows?
Yeah, but the same rules, the same rule should apply, almost, what do you mean, like, you know?
Said, if it, if it, if it passes the inspection, if it passes, because that's a lot of what it sounds like, you're quite bad at that inspection, so. It says if it passes the inspection without a problem, then it's considered to be sufficient for the current use, whatever that is. But if you had a three-bedroom, one, one person in it.
Yeah.
So, so in that, that, I think it just needs to have, it needs to not just be glossed over, but I think that's an important part of our regular.
So, Warren, I'm sorry, um.
So, Daniel, we should have, we should talk to board for help.
Yeah.
To get their feedback, it's almost in a way like a segment review, Daniel, where we're getting comments from all these different departments, and Jerry big time. Need more than a moment, you know, he, he's sat down with him.
So, Warren, I'm just curious, hypothetical, right, cause when he starts to move, I'm gonna see all sorts of different things.
Scott, Master, howdy.
So my question was, like, so typically, say if you have a three-bedroom, and then designed for what, fifteen hundred gallon tank? Is that?
No.
Three thousand, I, I, I gotta roll the math.
Okay, yeah, that's okay, the, the tank sizes depend on the year that it was done.
Right.
Anything prior to ninety-five, while it's a thousand gallon tank, but some, some towns require twelve-fifties, some put fifteen hundreds in, you know, but.
And that's.
So that's not really a controlling factor, controlling factor is the number of bedrooms.
No, no, I understand that, and what I was getting at was, so say you had something where a house had three bedrooms, and you're adding the ADU. We'd say one bedroom, and you're adding the fourth bedroom, and the tank was designed for the three bedrooms, and then the horn says, oh, no. That's not a bedroom, that's a library.
Wouldn't be the first person.
Wouldn't be the first person.
I understand that.
I think what they can do with that library, as long as it's seventy square feet, and has an operable window, twenty-four by thirty-two, or egress. That can be, that can be their library, you know, I mean, and then so.
So, basically, the tank has a little to do with it, I mean, the tank is, is a code determination, because a fifteen-nine gallon tank is good all the way up to five bedrooms.
Oh, okay, so.
I know the leach field, too, you have.
But the problem is the leach field is, the leach facility, whatever it is, the leasing facility is determining factors.
Right, okay.
But it's not a tank.
And, and it's, well, but it's, it, that's all relevant to the number of bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And in most cases, if you have a, a system that was done, you know, you know, within the last twenty-five years or something. You know, there'll be a design criteria, say it's designed for this many gallons per day, and then, and for this many bedrooms, just many gallons per day. So that information is pretty much available for the board to have to review, to say, okay, you know, if you don't. But, because, because there's very few houses that have a system bigger than what the house was designed for. So that means anytime you do one of these, they, if they're gonna try to add a bedroom on, they either gotta remove one from their existing, or upgrade the system.
Right, so that'll get you, as you can just imagine.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
The, the other thing, too, with, with Title V is, too, on the structure itself, if it's, if it is detached, you have to be at least ten feet from the tank. Twenty feet from the leach field, so that's another, like, just small AM.
But also, if you have a detached unit, you, um, a lot of times, if you're not removing a bedroom. You have to build a, a fully-coded system, and a fully-coded system requires a minimum of a three-bedroom design, that's in.
Right, right.
So, so you can get expensive, to add an ADU, to a detached ADU could require its own system, and the code requires a minimum of a three-bedroom design.
Oh, boy.
Is that a fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred-sized tank?
Well, the tank sizes. Yeah, well, the, 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 since ninety-five, the code requires a fifteen-hundred gallon tank minimum, prior to that, it was thousand gallon tank.
Yeah.
Prior to that, it was even less.
So every ADU is essentially gonna need, unless they're changing the layout of the main house, this additional tank, and the minimum's gonna be.
If, 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 if the, again, if it has an existing system, regardless of the size of the tank, and the system is good. Then it finds some use that it has, in which they would delete a bedroom, they could add a bedroom, as long as it don't exceed the number of bedrooms that the system was designed for, then never it's done. And as long as it probably passes the inspection.
But let's say they add one bedroom, and they don't subtract one bedroom from their house, the minimum is gonna be essentially putting in fifteen hundred.
Yeah, well, that's, cause that's the code, that's the minimum size in the current code, but that's not the determining factor, it's not the tank that's a problem, it's the leach facility. So the leach facility is, is what determines how many gallons a day the system can handle. The tank is just a settling tank, it's just a intermediate between the house and the leaching facility. It separates the solids from the fluids, and unless the fluids drain away, accumulates the solids in the tank, so it's really not. It, it's the leaching facility that really worked, that's.
And that's a factor of land.
It's a factor of a bunch of things, whatever the, whatever the soils are, and, um, you know, whatever the, uh, design of the system was, you know.
Does that require another perk test and all that stuff? Do you have to go through that again?
Yes.
Yeah, you get that, it's not expensive.
Well, I think that's what we, that's the only reason I brought up, because it is, it gets expensive fast. So it's gonna be.
If the construction alone, it isn't expensive enough already.
Yeah, so, so, but, so my original point was that to make sure that it was properly looked at.
Right.
You know, that it didn't just, somebody just say, oh, it's, it's, it's okay now, put check off, no, no, because then, when it goes bad, it's, everybody's mad.
That's all the more reason to really sit down with Jerry and. Go, cause it's so, there's a lot, there's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, then the building code would be, as of Friday last week, the tenth edition, which just went into effect, and that's IRC twenty-twenty-one, so that comes with a lot of new. Fun, fun things and costs, of course. Um, that, you know.
I think the reason the state didn't look clear is, is, um, is, is, is an obviously attempt to get some housing going, but also, I don't, I think they, um. Don't wanna discourage people from pulling permits and doing it illegally, because that's when, that's, doing it illegally. Is what makes sure that it's safe, you know, I mean, you get a leak inspector, the plumbing inspector, the, you know, the building inspector, everybody comes and does their inspections, says. I heard today that, um, that if you do a build a house in, in, uh, in, you know, this area, for example. Um, you know, the building inspector is gonna come approximately six times in the process of building the house. In Florida, because of the problems down there, it's twenty-seven inspections, build a house in Florida.
Is it just the hurricane?
Because of the requirements in the building code down there, to correct, protect, you know, to protect the housing from being damaged by bad weather, by cyclone, by. One eight is gonna be twenty-seven inspections, guys.
So that's a, that's a Jerry question, I, I personally think that Jerry's gonna need. Whether it's administrative help, or more administrative help, or it's actually field help, like, I think, like, this, it'll be interesting to talk to him, but it just, I don't. I don't see how, like, you pass this, and not have, give more resources, you know?
Yeah.
Well, when you pass it, it's passed, what I mean is, have you have a bylaw like this, and not, that allows it by right, and not give them so much rules.
Right, right.
You know? I think what we talked.
What we did was, uh, we, we, with, with all of the, the building of it, there was a certain part of the money that was accumulated, that went to a fund to pay for extra time and for help. For building inspector, and also for you, right, there was some.
For which project?
Edgewood.
I wasn't around for the building in Edgewood.
Well, anyway, so the planning administrator, we had extra, we had a fund, because there was a lot of extra work to go out, do inspections, and then. And then, uh, also for the building inspector, there was a fund.
Well, that's from the developer, right?
Yes, it came out of the permit fees and all that, so, so I don't know if that's something you would do again, is do, do a, a take on the permit fee.
Like, Warren's learning more than he's for.
I'm just curious, if, if you're gonna, if, if some. I'm just curious, if, if you're gonna, if, if someone comes in and pulls a permit for an A D U, and it's granted and everything's good and all the stars are aligned and everything, it's a go, not a detached, well, actually, it doesn't even matter. Does the taxes, like, how does that affect, like, someone who's doing that?
Well, yeah, they, the, uh, believe me, the assessor picks it right up.
Oh, they're gonna visit?
Oh, they know, the assessor will see the change, that's one of the checkboxes.
Well, that's what we're gonna probably ask, um, assessor if it really does happen, because it, it doesn't sound like it's really a big.
I know it's something that happens if you do a, some major renovation, increase the value of.
Get a visit.
And they'll pick it up.
I'm just curious. Yeah, just their kind of like help, town budget and.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're, if you're gonna pay for Jerry, it's not from permit fees.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying there, like, the impact of this, like.
Yeah.
So like, say, you know, you build an A D U, you go and live in the A D U and you rent your five bedroom house out, because it was just you and mama in the front house, now you rent that out, there's six kids there.
Well, I think to, like, like, I'm just curious, cause.
I don't know how many of these, I mean, there's probably a lot of people that will look into it, but as we've already discussed tonight, there, some of the costs associated with doing this are, are pretty high, and so you might find that you doesn't really ultimately have that many of them to deal with.
What Jerry thinks is all new homes that will be built, will probably be built in A D U.
And will then be, just taking care of it right up front.
Right up front, yeah, and because, you know, that's, people buying these things, yes.
So I think that would be, yeah, I'm seeing that, but I also think that not gonna be that many people come back to rent those there, um, without, um, you know.
There's just too many variables, even on.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know how much more, he's got a, he's got an assistant, the building inspector has an assistant, so I think they probably have enough plan following recovery.
Well, you're saying they don't do anything, um, and, and think too, you have to have enough fee, because it does go right to the board health, that, that person is now gonna see more applications and have to take the time to look into any application, you know, look in, yeah, so that, that's more of their time too. Are they, um, full time or is it a part?
The full time, so there's a full agent, there's a consultant that plans get sent to, and then there's the full time assistant.
Would that be how they'd probably go? Maybe is they, they ship out any application to, for that.
They send all their title plans to the consultant.
So the person would just have to pay the fee, so as long as you break even or whatever, it's not looking to make money, but as long as the town breaks even, I mean.
So I'm curious if the, the, the tax rates go back, if the tax rates for the nine hundred square foot would be the same as paying building, or if it would be different, like, would this town have like?
Per one thousand, so.
Well, yeah, but would the town have the flexibility to do that, through whatever, however they do it, so instead of, we tax everything the same, our commercial property is the same.
Yeah.
Uh, as, it, so like, would it, the actual A D U structure itself, it was freestanding?
I think it would be valuable, because I know when I get my tax bill, it tells me what the land value, what the building value is, and then any outbuildings or something, you know, you, you gotta shed, shed out the value.
Hmm.
And, um, so I think it would happen the same way, there is a value, but.
But like, are you asking, is it straight square footage, or is it something extra because it's actually a different unit? I, I can ask.
Yeah, that, that's my question, because anybody who's building one, they better know that stuff upfront.
Right.
Cause, well, they're gonna get smashed if, if the, so, I, I don't know how much tax.
Well, no, I mean, I think what you're getting at though, but the square footage matters in, 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 as far as the assessor doing their counts and things like that, but it's still, it's per one thousand of value, so the key is, what is that called? That's no longer a garage, you know, this detached A D U.
And what is the value?
It should have the same value as I would think the home dwelling, it's not a shed, it's not a chicken coop, it's not a.
The assessor will do all that.
You know, I mean, that's, to me, to me, that's what it would be in.
Yeah, Dave's right, they, they, that's basically what happened, the assessor would walk, if necessary, walk and look at it, and then say, okay, you know, this is, but but I don't know, I think probably when you, while you're moving, you gotta tell you how much, they're saying what you've spent, you know, I mean, they ask you to write that number down, so. There's gonna be a value to that.
So Jerry's been getting, so that's been one of the things that, you know, just personally, because I deal with that all the time, with, with builders and stuff like. The town up until, other than Martin's Landing, which is paying their fair share, you know, and building permit fees, a lot of the builders in town, and I should, and I, I welcome anybody that they wanna look up, like, in the years past, that these are million dollar homes, one forty four thousand square feet, even though, being, you know, built to this day, and builders are putting down, um, values three hundred thousand dollars, you know, for the permit fee, and that's, you said, you know, a safe term, you know, they're screwing us.
It's screw, that's Bobby Carr.
No, it's, it's, it's unacceptable, so Jerry, Kathy, and the whole team has really upped their game. And it showed this year with receipts on building, um, I think that was, but they've been really pushing that. Um, Jerry's been, you know, talking to the state on what, you know, how much they can request for proof of cost. He's having everybody, he's having everyone sign affidavits right now, so at least, you know, it doesn't, it's, it's, but it is a legal document.
The value of it is, is the combination value of the land that the building.
Well, not, you know, for the building permit, it's not.
Oh, yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying, yeah, they could sell a house for a million dollars.
No, I get, I get that, though, yeah, I'm not talking about my boss, like, I'm, I'm, my, my group is building houses, so I'm talking just the cost to build a house.
Yeah.
But I know what they cost.
Yeah.
And what these, and these, and the, where, you know, my, some of my groups are not building luxury homes, they're building, you know, basically, you know, starter homes and a little bit above that, um, empty nesters and things like that, you know, the mid range, and they're going for nine hundred thousand dollars, you know.
Where is that at?
And that, this is up in Portland.
What, I mean?
And they cost two hundred and twenty five dollars a square foot, and this is for a very simple home, so they're well over, well over three fifty here in North Reading for a square foot easily all day long, so you do the math on a four thousand square foot, and that's what they value, that's how much the house costs. And that's builder cost.
Well, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of inflation in all of these costs, and I, I guess we just haven't kept up with it.
Just, just, that's probably, that's probably correct, you know, in some ways, but I think also the builders get used to just kind of, you know, they write it down and they put it in.
Yeah.
And I've seen my share of permits, um, then I think the ones that go under the radar too are the electrical ones.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever, and they'll put down their fifteen hundred dollars, you know what I mean, and it's.
They're wired to go down to the basement.
You've been going through that, basically, you said.
Title wire, all it is coming down there was wrong.
But this just gets back to.
Speaking of the house.
We're, we're going down the rabbit hole, obviously, but this just gets back to covering the cost of the town for these different agents to be working on this. That's all I'm saying, like, they need, you know, and, and everyone needs to like pay their fair share to, like, support these people, they have to go out and inspect six times, as Warren says, and you know, and, and, you know, check the Title Five and all the different things like that, the wiring inspector, how many visits does he have, so. It's, uh, it just needs to be paid for, that's my only worry. But there's, other than you saying, asking, you have to go through the building permit process, there's not much we can add to the, your bylaw, right? I mean, it'll just get thrown into the mill there and, you know, that's how, that's how it works.
It, it seems to be a pretty simple form, but maybe the form that, that circulates the water, all the departments needs to be a little more elaborate, requires some
Yeah.
information and somebody sign.
Yeah, like.
I, I looked this over, so.
Yeah.
They were, you were supposed to look, that's what I was running into.
Yeah.
Some stuff that was checked off, nobody took responsibility.
Jerry's very strict though, Jerry only issues a foundation permit first.
First.
You don't get a building permit, you get a foundation permit, you build your foundation, then you do an ASVIL, and that means survey corners.
Yeah.
He gets that back, then he knows that thing's in the ground. Well, he knows exactly what it is, you know, it's tariff, and then after that, they issue the permit, so. It'll be the same thing if you do it detached, you know, not.
Go detached, yeah.
Yes, but, um, but yeah, I think that's why we just have to support Jerry, but a checklist would probably help. To get him, yeah, there'd be.
There's already a checklist, but it needs to be a little more.
Yeah, yeah, I, it, yeah, his checklist is, you know, plans on, you know, he wants plans on, was it by seventeen, or, you know, have some different requirements and all that.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, any, anything else? We're not gonna spend tons of time. Public, if you, if you wanna speak at all, if you use, Max, anything? Um, and, and we just, you came in, we're about ten minutes into, we were just kinda going through some of the stuff, um, but, yeah. So what do you think, um, Danielle, what, what should we kind of, um, for a goal for the next meeting? Can we have Jerry here maybe?
I'll invite him, um, so our next meeting, um, would have been scheduled for first Tuesday in November, but that's election day, so. Um, we can either schedule a different day, or we can go to the third Tuesday, whatever you would like to do. I should mention too, under my updates, I was gonna mention, we've got four candidates who apply for the vacancy, and if you want to have interviews, um, that night, you can do that, if you wanna choose a different night, that's fine too.
Danielle, what is the process that we have to go through?
So, at this point.
What do we have to do?
Um, so because we've, we've advertised already, we've passed the deadline, we've got four candidates, um, all of the members of the C P C and all the members of the select board review the resumes, the application letters, um. At that point, we, we can schedule a date. In the past, we've done it both ways, we've had the C P C have a meeting and invite the select board members. We've also done it at a select board meeting and had the C P C invited, usually it's the C P C hosting the meeting. Um, and it can be on a regular meeting night, if it's not too busy a night, or it can be a separate meeting night, um. We've had it where we have done interviews and then voted an appointment that same night, we've also done it, if there are a number of candidates, we've done them on different nights, if whatever people are comfortable with doing. So I did wanna kind of ask you what you would like that process to be, you want me to schedule, if you're gonna meet me if you wanna.
So, the, so, I'm, I'm sorry, so does the C P C? Yeah.
It's a joint appointment, between the two boards, so the, um, so when the appointment gets made, I'm sorry.
Yeah, basically, you know, we interview them and everything, and, and, uh, and then we pass the information on to the select board, they.
Okay, so, okay.
We appointed Jeremiah that way, if you remember Jeremiah.
Yeah.
You know, and then he, then he won, you know, or ran, right?
Then, exactly.
It's like similar.
Can't have to run again, if you wanna stay.
So we interviewed, that was during COVID, so all the interviews are on, on Zoom, yeah, yeah.
Like old days.
With a kid on top of you, and you're like. Don't mind that, you know.
So, so then basically what we would do is that, that, we would, like, meet with, with, with the four individuals.
And we invite the select board members for that, because it's, it's really, two boards are working together on this, so it, it would be, the interviews are really conducted by the members of the C P C and any members of the select board that also wanna be there, and the appointment is made every member of every board.
So when's the next, since we've got election night, so when's the next, next? Because we should probably do this soon.
Well, if we do the interview.
Number nine.
And they are, assuming the select board can come to be there during the interviews, but then we'll go to a select board meeting, and we'll join the.
We can do that, but, but what I think of getting at, or Danielle's getting at, is we are, our next meeting is on election day, so we're like, we're like, lead driving now, four, yeah, over four weeks ahead, so.
November nineteenth?
So do you wanna do it as, in a select board meeting instead, where my, not fall on election day?
Well, I, I, I think that the, the select board would like the planning board to interview a planning board member, give them a recommendation.
That kind of makes sense, it's an easier process, I would think.
Yeah, much easier process.
Or no, I was just, I was just trying to expedite the process to wait another.
If you want five, then if you do it this way, this is the best way.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it goes through us and then we say.
Um, the next meeting night for us.
Would be.
Um, November nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay, yeah, then that's what it's gonna be.
November nineteenth, yeah.
Unless you wanna schedule a different date as an alternative to not, because otherwise it would have been election day.
The other thing to do would be to set some workshop and just do it in the local workshop.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, it could be, we could have a different night to just do that if you want to.
Probably not a bad idea.
One night as a workshop, and then we could just, if we go all four of them, we'll invite the select board to come to that workshop, they either come or they don't, but then when we go meet with them, we'll present our, what we think would work the best for us, and they'll ask questions, and do whatever they do, and then we'll all vote, or vote.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, that's the best way.
Expedite a little bit, because we're far off.
So, do we wanna try to stick to a Tuesday?
I mean, yeah, I mean, probably, yeah.
Actually, if we, if, 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 if we can do a Wednesday.
I could, I could do Wednesday.
The only reason I wanna do a Wednesday is so that he doesn't have.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, Max.
As long as it's not the first Wednesday of the month, that's the only one, every other Wednesday is fun.
That was the one I was going.
Ah.
We're gonna do it at the horseshoe anyways, you can bring it on this couch.
Well, no, no, it's a Wednesday, it's Minutemen, man, I'll be wearing my tricorn and my musket, you know.
What about Wednesday, either the thirtieth of October, or November sixth, or November thirtieth?
November sixth is the first Wednesday of the month.
Oh, you're right.
Why don't we do the thirtieth of October?
That works, man.
Thirty, okay.
That, the. We have to make sure this room is available, this is the last meeting real much, because we're boards of our size, so, I, I will be looking firm, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Danielle. Yeah, do you wanna do it a little earlier? Kind of seven thirty, guys?
Yeah.
Need to wait till seven thirty, right?
Um, six.
Sure.
Well, I don't know, six.
What's a vampire?
Our expense, what I'm, what I'm working on.
Well, how long, I mean, how long do you think it will be?
A couple hours, but six thirty.
They, they go on longer than you think, especially depending on the quality of the candidates, some people.
Well, I do want them to dance and do some other tricks, so, yeah, that could take a while, two songs at least.
I can tell you, it's worth waiting to, to talk to all the people, that's how we got her.
You know.
So what time?
Six thirty, I guess, Warren, can you get that?
Yeah.
Six thirty, nine, ten thirty.
We're shooting for October thirtieth, see if we can get it.
Yes.
Um, we'll confirm November availability, I'll send you know up everyone to.
Yeah, I didn't want you, I wanted.
All right, no, I'm out. So, just, cause I told Danielle, we're gonna make this meeting pass, um, like I said.
Do you wanna pick a second one, just in case, like, uh, the second weekend?
Well, let's see what you're doing in the rooms again.
The second one could be. I can't, I can't skip that for this.
Well, it's a voting Tuesday, though.
Yeah, that's the election, so we can, they're gonna fall on Tuesday.
Ninth or tenth, whatever.
What, the fall on Tuesday?
And also the thirteenth, and the twelfth is a Tuesday.
Does that work? Is the backup?
Yeah, it's a backup, I guess, right, eleven, twelve.
We'll check both of those dates.
That's cool. Okay, all right, and then Danielle, um, I just give you the floor for any other updates, just one item.
Um, no, I think I actually gave them throughout the meeting, so, um, I'm just mostly gonna talk about candidates, so.
Okay.
There you go.
And, yeah, I'm gonna close the meeting, um, and Max, we have a, a new clerk, we appointed.
Right on.
You were the, oh, you'd be the clerk.
Aw, really? Dude.